Go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance for Agents in a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Tim.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lynn. Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Jett. Is absent. Councilmember Wimp. Thank you.
All right. Welcome, Councilmember Wimp. Good to see you here at the meeting. We'll go ahead and start with committee reports. I'll start on my left, Councilmember Clark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. Just a couple of committee reports for you here tonight. First off is my work with the senior council, and proud to let you know that Santa Cruz County now has a fraud alert program to help prevent home title theft. This is a growing problem within the senior community and a growing crime nationwide. We haven't seen a huge impact here yet in Santa Cruz County, but there are concerns. So to proactively address the problem, the county set this up, and it's their fraud notify program, and it's set up through the recorder's office. So to sign up, go to the county recorder site. That's at recorder.santacruzcountyca.gov, and you can sign up for fraud alerts for any home title action that's taken on your account. So I encourage folks to do that and protect themselves. Also, too, concerning the senior community is Medicare open enrollment is now up and running. But with that, again, the theme tonight is fraud, right? With that comes the threat of additional fraud and fraudsters that are out there. So our seniors will receive a number of solicitations. Some are legitimate, many are not. And so we're just making sure that our seniors are aware that there are fraudulent solicitations out there for Medicare. And if they have any questions, whether it's about their benefits or whether is this fraudulent, is this legitimate, they can actually contact the county's HICAP office, and the HICAP office will provide them assistance free of charge. And if you're not familiar with HICAP, that's the Health Insurance Counseling and Advocacy Program. They provide free and unbiased counseling about Medicare and other health insurance options. So I encourage them, just Google Santa Cruz County HICAP. They can find the contact information, and they should be able to assist them throughout that entire situation. And then one more note is as of September 30th, for our seniors who are receiving social security, social security is no longer issuing paper checks, and so they're only doing it by means of electronic transfer. So again, the HICAP office can help them set up banking information so that they continue to get their social security benefits. And that's it for the senior council. Talking economic development now, shifting gears. I attended the Scotts Valley Drive Business Owners Meeting on October 6th, and this was, the intent of this meeting was to gather feedback on changes to Scotts Valley Drive. I was there with the Public Works Director Rodolfo, and also the city manager was there. And I just want to call out Rodolfo. You did an excellent job. There were some, as you can imagine, some opinions that were pretty forcefully expressed during that. You did such a great job diffusing that, letting people be heard, letting them vent a little bit, and then bringing them back to the matter at hand. So I just want to recognize the good work that you did on that. And in that as well, we also got some very good feedback that we can take into consideration with the redesign of the pavements. So, to do, go through my list here, sorry. Then also, too, this afternoon, we met with the Chamber Economic Development Team today, the city manager and I did. The lion's share of that meeting, we discussed a number of strategies for coordination around the upcoming Super Bowl and FIFA World Cup soccer events. We'd like to find ways to collaborate and integrate our commerce and our economy in that event going on here. So we worked with our chamber to talk about strategies and how we might do that. So we'll be looking forward to more work that way. Then finally, on the Regional Transportation Commission, I met with the ad hoc committee on the rail line encroachments. I'm part of that committee. Right now, we're working on developing strategies and mitigations for properties approaching along the Santa Cruz Branch Rail Line. These are encroachments that we have to have cleared if we're moving forward in segments eight through 12, and that's mostly, think of it as the east side of Santa Cruz out to 47th Avenue. So we're working on mitigation strategies to try to soften the blow on that. So more to come on that. Can't say too much right now, but I'll have a report for you in the future on that. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Vice Mayor.
And one more thing, and all the things that Steve did, or Councilmember Clark, we had the Facilities Planning Committee meeting with, no, you gave it to me, so okay. But doing some work on that with our city manager and Captain Rutherford, and actually, as Councilmember Clark has some experience with the Santa Cruz move, their police department, it was really helpful to have his input, and we look forward to more to come. Also, representing the city for the ribbon cutting for Mobi Bank, for Santa Cruz County Community Bank, and this is, the mobile bank will be able to respond to areas with special needs, isolated areas, such as the flooding in Paro, they'll be able to move that bank right to the location and be able to serve those that may not be able to access their banks and banking. And really exciting to see this, it was received with donated, because it's otherwise very, very expensive, would have been prohibitive. So this is something that will even help our seniors up here in Scotts Valley, some of the more isolated areas where they can't easily drive to banking and have that resource. So really exciting just to be there with Councilmember Wimp and get a tour and support this new Mobi Bank, as they call it. Also, attended the MAC ad hoc committee meeting through Metro. That's actually Metro Advisory Committee. We're looking to replace a couple positions and actually reopening applications for someone who wants to serve with MAC, particularly looking for those that use the various services, some with disabilities, needing paracrews, Highway 17, and also looking for a cross selection of the counties so that we're representing diversity in location and the members. So if someone knows someone or wants to reach out, I can provide information on how to apply for that opening. It's been extended through November. And also, Saints and Sinners, October 18th, the Landing Tickets are available, and add that in with, rather than public comment, but get your tickets for a fun evening on Saturday, October 18th. Support the Landing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll assume Councilmember Wimp has no reports because we haven't assigned any committees to you until tonight. All right. So I just, I usually have my Ambag report, but the meeting was canceled because last week, the Leagues Cities, a lot of the members were down in Southern California for the annual conference. So the meeting was canceled, so no report there. And I do want to just give a quick hats off to the Parks and Rec Department. I know they're not here tonight, but fantastic job on the 5K run over the weekend. We have a champion right here who took home a medal, and I see one out in the audience as well. So, so really hats off. It was an excellent event, well-attended, a great first inaugural job by the department, and please share our thanks with them. It was really, it put a good face forward for our city. So with that, I'll kick it over to the city manager for her report.
Thank you, Mayor Tim, and members of the council and community. I was going to mention the 5K was such a successful and fun event on Saturday morning, and thank you to both Mayor Tim and Councilmember Wimp for running in the race. You guys had great times, and it was really fun to cheer everybody on. And, yeah, I agree. It was, it was a really, really fun event.
And I appreciated getting water from our city clerk. That was very helpful. I needed that about halfway through, so thank you.
She was at the midpoint handing out water, so thank you for doing that. Next, just an update on our citywide pavement project. So we're getting towards the tail end of this project. This week, they're focusing on adjusting utility boxes to grade and also the permanent striping, adding that to the roads. And just a note that the striping on Mount Herman Road will be done at night to minimize the impacts on traffic. Also, Public Works has joined the city's online permitting system, so encroachment permits are now available through our Open Gov Portal, so continuing to digitize and be available to the community as in many ways as we can versus people having to come into the office during certain times. Also, our team installed the no parking for street sweeping signs along El Pueblo, Victor Square, and Technology Circle. Those, those signs and the need to close the street for street sweeping was determined to help keep our storm drains clean and keep our creek clear of waste. So starting now, Tuesdays from 5:00 to 7:00 a.m., there will be no parking on those roads, and there are 50 new signs installed, so it should be very clear to folks where those areas need to be kept clean. Next, the Town Center Environmental Impact Report was published on Friday for public review. That'll be a 45-day review period, and the Planning Commission will hold a public meeting in November, on the 20th of November, to hear input from the community, public comments on the EIR. Today, staff met with our sales tax consultant to review our sales tax revenue data from April through June of this year. Overall, that quarter's sales tax was flat, but that was due to a combination of some industries having gains, other industries having losses. Overall, our sales tax revenues are tracking with our budget, and we'll continue to track that closely. We are also preparing the Strategic Plan Q1 Report to be released in the next couple of weeks. That will kick off fiscal year '25-'26 with our activities from the July to September period. So looking forward to getting that out. Also, this week, our finance staff is working with our audit firm to review the requested documents that they're pulling regarding our fiscal year '24-'25 annual financial audit. That's exciting stuff. And HR is finalizing open enrollment for all staff with their health, health plans. So lots of, lots of work happening around those things. And finally, I just wanted to let the community and everyone know that at your next council meeting on November 5th, we will be honoring retiring Police Chief Steve Waple, and so we would love to have people come and support him at that council meeting.
Great. Thank you, City Manager. With that, I'll open it up to public comment. So if anyone's here to make a comment on items not on our agenda here, please approach the podium or raise your hand online. Okay. See no one in the audience? Any hands online? All right, hands raised. So we'll move on to, do we have any alterations from staff or council to the consent agenda?
There are no alterations from staff.
And from council. Any members of the public wishing to pull an item? Seen none. I'll bring it back. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Say. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, mash. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have, do we have any alterations to our regular agenda tonight?
There are no alterations from staff.
Any from council? Any from the public? Seen none?
Move approval.
Motion?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. So we'll start with the regular agenda. We have one item here to start with. We'll start with the introduction of ordinance number 102.18. That's an ordinance of City Council, City of Scotts Valley, amending Title 15, Chapter 1504, sections of the California Code of Regulations, Building Code Standards. So I'll kick it over to our building department.
Good evening, Honorable City Council, City Staff Members, and members of the public. My name is Nelson Alfaro. I'm the building official, and today we're going to talk about the 2025 California Building Codes Updates. A summary of the issues. Every three years, the building, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and other building codes are updated to include the most current constructions and engineering principles and practices under the purview of the California Building Standards Commission. The newly revised California Building Standards Codes are published for required local adoptions. This process is to ensure that the latest construction, engineering, and life and safety techniques become standards practices throughout the state. The mandatory effective date of the 2025 Building Standards is January 1st, 2026. The building codes proposed for adoptions as applicable includes the following. Administrative codes, building codes volumes 1 and 2, residential code, electrical code, mechanical code, plumbing code, energy, wildland urban interface code, historical building codes, existing building code, rebuilding standards code, reference standard code, and the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, thereafter referred to as the IPMC, as published by the International Code Council. Overall, the proposed ordinance provides the adoption of the mandatory state mandates. Among of the many updates to the 2022 California Building Codes, the followings are especially important. The State of California has enacted Assembly Bill 130, AB 130, which established a statewide moratorium on adoptions or amendments of the building standards for residential units by cities and counties for the period of October 1st, 2025, through June 1st, 2031. During this period, local jurisdictions are prohibited from enacting new rich codes, rebuilding ordinance, or other local amendments that would make residential construction requirements more restricted than the those contained in the California Building Standard Codes. This moratorium does not prevent implementations of local amendments already in effect as September 13th, 2025, emergency standards necessary to address immediate health and safety threats if approved by the California Building Standards Commission, a standard specifically related to wildfire risk mitigation and home hardening measures, amendments needed to align with the jurisdictions general plan adopted on or before June 10th, 2025, and minor administrative editorial or federal mandate updates. The 2025 California Building Standards will start to take effect on January 1st, 2026, and will remain in force for the residential construction throughout the moratorium period, providing regulatory stability. The next residential code update cycle will not occur until the 2031 code cycle, allowing developers and local governments to plan projects without fear of mid-cycle changes that could impact cost and timing. The legislature stated that the purpose for AB 130 is to improve housing affordability and reduce construction delays by limiting frequent changes to residential building requirements while still preserving the state's ability to respond to health, safety, and wildfire-related concerns. The other item is that the State of California has enacted the 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code, the CWUIC, Iro 24, Part 7, in direct response to the significant and ongoing increase in wildfire destructions, particularly within the signed Wildland Urban Interface, WUI zones. Historically, California regulations, measurements addressing wildfire risk were dispersed across Chapter 7A of the California Building Code, Chapter 49 of the California Fire Code, and Section 337 of the California Residential Code. The 2025 CWUIC consolidates provisions into a single comprehensive regulatory framework, government building construction, defense of space requirements, and develop standards within WUI areas. The 2025 CWUIC provides, among other requirements, initial resistant construction standards, the defensible spaces mandates, material listing and testing compliance, and their applicability will extend to those provisions to all the new structures, additions, and certain exterior alterations located within the state's responsibility areas, CRAs, very high hazard severity zones, and other locally designated high hazard areas. The effective date is established January 1st, 2026, as the mandatory enforcement date in coordination with the state's triennial code adoption cycle. This unified code framework is intended to enhance public safety, mitigate wildfire risk, and ensure statewide consistency in WUI construction and land uses standards. Staff recommendations, it is recommended that the city council introduce ordinance number 102.8, an ordinance of the city council of the city of the Scotts Valley, amending Title 15, Chapter 15.04, by amending Sections 15.04 on 060 and 15.34 and 120, to adopt the California Code of Regulations, Iro 24, 25 Building Standard Codes, and other codes and repealing 15.04.070 of the Scotts Valley Municipal Code. That's all the information that I have. Any questions?
Okay, questions from council?
Yeah, I have a couple. Hi, thank you for the information, and welcome to the council meeting. So taking a look here at the applicability of the 2025 CWIC, and it indicates here that extending these provisions to all new structures, additions, and certain exterior alterations located within state responsibility areas, very high fire hazard severity zones, and other locally designated high hazard areas. Do we have maps that we'll be able to provide for the community so, so folks can know where this might be applicable to them?
There is a new map that was created by the Fire Commission, so there is.
So it would be that same map then from the, from the Fire guys?
Yeah, it'll be the same map.
Okay, so we're not, we're not generating anything specific to Scotts Valley?
No.
And then my other question on that then is, it's my understanding from this that this only applies to new, new construction or new additions. Does it apply to existing structures who may perhaps don't have the required setbacks or the required, I'm sorry, defensible space areas?
Well, the, well, it's going to be on the WUI code now, but right now it's located in the 3, Iro 37, and it states that it's going to be only applicable to buildings that were constructed after 2010.
Okay.
So before, if your house was built before, before that, you don't have to do any WUI requirements, as long as it's not a new house.
And, and maybe this is a question for you, Taylor. I'm just curious, what kind of communication are we doing to our homeowners so that they know that this is a, now a compliance mechanism that they'll have to?
And just, just for clarification, and the city attorney can jump in, it's not going to, if somebody's just maintaining their home as is, they don't need to. It's only when they want to do some sort of upgrade, build a new house, do it, and then those regulations.
Okay.
So as far as outreach, we did have that fire event at the community center. Just those maps to the, talked about that. We have various upcoming fire awareness workshops. Be another opportunity to talk to homeowners about that, share information on what hardening your home looks like. And then lastly, I do think this has been something that's been discussion for some within building community. So builders, developers, anybody who does construction is probably well aware of the regulations. It's also been in effect in other parts of the county for a number of years as well, and now has come to Scotts Valley. So I think there's already a large amount of awareness there, but there could always be opportunities for more.
Great, yeah, thanks. And that was part of my concern is, you know, all of a sudden we're just gonna, somebody's gonna be in panic mode, or we're gonna spring some surprise on the community, not ready for. So thanks. That answers my questions.
Other questions?
I did have one. So with some of the clearance that's required around structures, it says it's now 100 feet clearance. So on new construction, is that going to change? We talked about this a little bit in some of our past meetings, but landscaping plans and our people, how will that affect things like heritage trees? Is that gonna, just curious how that will look going forward?
Well, if you have a new building, a new permit, you don't have to do anything. But if you add a new building, you know, you had to meet those set, fire set requirements. If you're just doing maintenance, you don't do nothing to your house. You don't have to do anything, because everything that is gonna, we're gonna enforce is gonna be for new construction. It's not maintenance.
And so like in a situation where someone decides to add an ADU, say, you've kind of expanded those requirements, are they going to have to now, let's say they have a wooded backyard, and they, they fall in one of these fire severity zones, are they going to have to clear cut? And, and will that be allowed under other laws related to heritage trees safer? So you, you bring up an interesting thing, and it's something that I think we're going to have to do a little bit of learning our way through that. How exactly, every situation is a little bit different. Topography's different, amount of trees and types of trees that are present, landscaping plans are different, too. So there's definitely going to be some work ahead of our staff and community to better understand those and regulations. We are seeing some of that right now, insurance being dropped on home, having to retrieve that. So there's been a lot of forward and change thinking regarding those things. But heritage trees, those would still be, there's still, you know, an opportunity to retain them. They don't necessarily all have to be down, ladder them up, plant certain types of plants that work. So there's lots of avenues forward there to retain the beauty that we have, but also do it in a safe and responsible way.
Right, which we've seen communities that haven't met requirements and what can happen and how dangerous it is, and how lucky we were during the CZU fires. So having this in place going forward, it, it will be helpful. But again, it's going to be kind of hodgepodge in the city, because it seems like if it's only applying to new structures and we're not moving towards like a, like a master fire safety, this is kind of a one-off.
That's correct. It's something that'll play out over decades, where we're seeing current construction, a lot of spots is in areas that aren't in severity zone, like in the center or on the valley floor. That's where probably most of the construction's going to occur over the next ten. And so likely, they won't have as requirements regarding the building code tonight. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Well, one of the things that I, when the mayor brought this up, Scotts Valley Fire's been going around and inspecting residences, and that seems like that will, and bringing to the attention those that may have safety concerns, fire safety concerns. And I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but they've, they've even notified some of the residents if there's things stored in their backyard that increases fire concerns. And so possibly, I'm thinking, and I'm fairly sure you're coordinating with the fire department, and this will help get the word out, and we'll be sending the same messages and, and making sure that our codes- making sure that our codes are consistent with theirs, so I think that may help too. We can help get the word out through them as well.
And our building official and fire marshal, mostly daily, if not weekly, choose throughout the city.
Yeah.
And we'll also have, up before then, we'll also be opting fire codes, so we'll have opting those codes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then I'll go to the public to see if there are any questions or comments from the public. So please approach podium.
Hello, everyone. I'll just make a comment and.
Or say your name for the.
Oh, sure. My name's Alex Titus. I live on Cove Lane. So I'll just make a comment, most of Scotts Valley is in this hardened CAL FIRE zone. For example, I was the HOA president of the Cove, a new townhome development off Scotts Valley Drive, right behind Rumblefish. Brand new townhomes. That was 2020. Our insurance was dropped this past year for fire risks. These are brand new, they have sprinklers all built into it, like, come on. But this is the unfortunate new reality for California and Scotts Valley, so I'm very supportive of these hardening rules. Anything to give us an upper hand for the next fire is a win for this community. New building materials, the correct fire breaks, and so on and so on. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other? Yep, yep.
Just, just in response, one of the things the city did offer recently was a workshop with Fire Department, with the state insurance, a whole panel of experts helping get the information out, helping us as a city learn how we can make changes and, and deal with the, the difficulty in getting insurance, and so watch for that. You may even, probably can find it online still, that workshop, but there's, there's some really good information from our insurance commissioner. Much of that's changing day to day.
Okay, other public comment? You went online? All right, that'll bring it back to council, and we'll prefer the discussion or a motion.
Yeah, I would just reiterate, some of the comments that Councilmember Lynn made, and a number of us were in a, it's online seminar with the State Insurance Commissioner as well as Assemblymember Pellerin. We're well aware of the insurance problem, and I'm also aware of how it's affecting HOAs and HOAs that are perhaps raising their deductibles, and now they're creating a problem in terms of conventional mortgages that cannot be obtained on those properties because that fire insurance deductible is too high. So I've been in a number of meetings now with the State Insurance Commissioner and working towards trying to find a way to mitigate these, these insurance claims and problems that are plaguing not just Scotts Valley, but the rest of the state. And so I would say stand by, and more to come on that, but hopefully, there is a, there's an effective plan, provide some relief, because I think we all realize it's becoming an untenable situation and impeding homeownership for a lot of people. You know, we, we bend over backwards to try to make affordable housing, but when these costs come in on the backside of it, it takes away that affordability for some of our most vulnerable population. So we're aware and we're, we're trying to make some headway here.
That's a very good point. When we did hold that insurance and fire safety conference, I mean, we saw hands raised from just about everyone in the audience, and it was a packed house, one of the biggest well-attended events we've had. And so we had people saying that they've been dropped, their rates had tripled, quadrupled. Most of us up here on the board have had, experienced that as well. And so it's, it's, it's impacting, and I agree with your comment about the vulnerable situation, affordable housing, we're working so hard to try to get affordable housing built, but how do people that move into affordable housing then get a surprise insurance bill? It's four or five X, and it's, it's just going to be problematic. So yeah, it's good to see this come forward. Other comments or for a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation, introducing ordinance 102.18, an ordinance of City Council, City of Scotts Valley, amending Title 15, Chapter 1504, by amending sections 15.04.060 and 1504.120 to adopt the CAL FIRE Code of Regulations, Title 24, and 2025 Building Standards Codes and other codes repealing 15.04.070 of the Scotts Valley Municipal Code.
All right, we have a motion. Move a second.
Second.
A motion to second. Any discussion? Seen none? We'll go look for, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously, and then I'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is future council agenda items. Do we have any? Okay, seen none, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.